Okay. Good evening, welcome to the third meeting of the Planning Board for this fiscal year. Today is September 8th, 2011, and this is being both recorded and broadcast live. My name is Emily Ennis, I'm the chairman.
Peter Jackson, member.
Alex Whiteside, member.
Ed Duffy, member.
Bernie Lynch, member.
Diane Colligan, secretary.
Lee Clark, planning directors.
Okay. First item on our agenda is the approval of past minutes. We've got two sets of minutes, one for June 23rd and one for July 28th.
June 23rd looks fine today, and I approve that we accept it.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous, and July 28th?
July 28th looks fine to me, and I approve that we accept it.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Also unanimous. Our next scheduled Planning Board meeting is September 22nd at 6:30 PM in the John Cronin Conference Room upstairs. We have Citizens Speak. Now, I know there was at least one person who wanted to speak who called me, but I don't see him. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak for Citizens Speak? Introduce yourself, please. Name and address.
Margaret Donovan, excuse me, 41 Central Avenue. And I'm here to speak to three issues pertaining to 36th Central Avenue. The first involves the eligibility and notification and disposition of the affordable units. It was suggested to me by Karen sometime this summer that maybe I should purchase one. I had to explain to him that I would not be eligible because of the income and asset requirements restrictions. But I haven't heard or seen anything, and I don't know if, in fact, since I last spoke with the Moores, if any of those units, those two units, have been sold. But it certainly seems to me that there ought to be some kind of public notice or some kind of notification so that people here in Milton who are eligible would have an opportunity to purchase.
We'll look into that.
Okay.
I think we can respond a little bit.
Well, I'm sorry, I was going to say, I want to hear all three of your things first.
Okay. All right. Second one, you recall that there was the special permit that this board granted to 36th Central had height restrictions and planting requirements on the Brookhill roadside of the property. There has been no plantings, and it's a mess, frankly. I do not understand how, with a special permit, making those two requirements, how they could even issue an occupancy permit until those requirements had been met. Certainly as far as the height is concerned, no one's going to go in there with the yardstick to see if they lived up to the height restriction, but obviously the planting is out there for everyone to see, or at least the lack thereof. The third issue I brought up at the most recent meeting that I attended, I believe, and it had to do with the 30-minute signs up Central Avenue, and the fact that people were parking all day long and getting on the T from the 36th Central up to the School Street block. Since then, I have noticed that the 30-minute signs have been changed to one-off signs up the street, except nothing has been done about that between the beginning of 36th Central up to School Street. And so, it still remains an MBTA parking lot. Those are my three issues.
Okay. Well, let me take the third one, and we'll work backwards. I believe, if I remember correctly, at the last meeting that Bill was going to check in with the Traffic Commission on the status of the enforcement, which was your primary concern, and maybe you can give us a quick update on that? Has the Traffic Commission met since our last meeting?
They have not met since the last one, their meeting the end of September.
End of September?
Somewhere between the 21st and 28th.
And will you be attending that?
I will be attending it, and it will be an item on the agenda.
Okay. All right, so that's the first one. Second?
There are two parts to that. I mean, the signage is seemingly critical, and--
Enforcement would be the second part.
Enforcement. You can't enforce anything if you don't have any signs. So, it seems to me that you might talk to the DPW about signs, even before the Traffic Commission meets at the end of the month.
The DPW is on the Traffic Commission, too, so you mean, have the signs ready in anticipation of the--
Well, you know, it does seem to me that this is a good point. Parking and Central Avenue is critical. I mean, it's tight, and not having proper signs so people can park there all day is not the way it should be.
Between what I went and researched, what the DPW went and researched, and what the Police Department went back to find, we can't find anything in the last six years that shows signs in that area. In order to put the signs up, the Traffic Commission has to, one, take a vote and give that recommendation to the selectmen. The selectmen make the approval to that. The Traffic Commission will take up the issue the end of September, and usually it's the next meeting of the selectmen that it gets addressed. DPW is on there, Police Department's on there, so--
All right.
While we're talking about the signage in that area, one of the things that I've noticed is going up Brookhill Lane, the first three spaces are signed for one hour, but then when you go beyond that, it's all service zone. And, you know, I don't know what determines how many service zone spaces are, but we've got so many service zone spaces that are empty all the time going up over Elliot Street. You know, why take prime parking, which would be great for customers, and turn it into a service zone? So I would love to see the one-hour parking extended up Brookhill Road and get those service zones parking over on Elliot Street, because they're empty all the time. I think that would be worth, you know, in this whole package of things you recommend to the Traffic Commission, I'd like to take a look at that change also.
Yeah, I actually thought they were supposed to have been looking at the service zone several years back before any of this started, to see what they could do about that.
Well, they did.
They did temporarily.
And they did put a bunch of them up on Elliot Street, all the way coming over the hill is all service zone parking, which is a good place for them. But the ones closest to the businesses should be for, you know, customers.
And they also would provide additional parking, which is going to be an important issue--
Yes, it is.
--soon.
Yes, it is.
A question from Howard.
Do you have a recollection that there have ever been, because I know you've been there
for many years?
Twenty.
Did you ever have a recollection that there were signs there?
I do, yes. Yes, I do.
Okay, so, why don't you go to the next Traffic Committee meeting? No, because we just went down on Brook Road where there was a stop sign that was removed. Then they didn't have to go to the selectmen to get approval. The DPW just put a stop sign there because someone had a recollection that there was a sign there.
Now, to your second question, on the special permits for the height restrictions and the planting requirements. So, the building inspector in that department is responsible for ensuring that the special permit conditions have been met. So, and I haven't been back there behind, so you're saying that they haven't been met because the plantings are not there. So, we should inform the building department that those plantings are missing and have them follow up.
We should take a look at it. And then--
Well, we should all take a look at it, or just me personally? I'm happy to go down there.
I think that you and Mr. Jackson should look and see if the planting is adequate, if it's in accordance with the special permit. If it's not, you can advise the building inspector.
Well, I would confirm Margaret's observation that the plantings across the Brook, on the Brookhill roadside, have not been done, and that site cleanup, as required, has not been done.
Okay.
The only part of the cleanup over there that's been done is that they did do the repairs to the small building that were required. The plantings, they have not done. The mulching, they have not done.
And as I recall, Mr. Clark, you are the coordinator of that particular part of the project.
I am. I've been there several times, and I haven't been there in the last month.
Well, it seems to me that follows a good planting time, not to mention good mulching times, so we should encourage them to get those plants in there.
I have been.
Okay. And finally, I think you could probably speak to Margaret's first question, which would be, what's going on with the affordable units, do you know?
The affordable units issues are somewhere between their lawyer, DHCD, and they are going to, there will be publication of the units. There is a 70% eligibility for Milton residents of the units. We're working to put the whole thing together, and it will be done through the Milton Housing Authority, will be their agent. So, it will be publicized.
Do you have a timeline on that?
I do not.
Or is it still up in the air? Okay.
Basically, what people do is they apply, and they have an interest, and then there's a lottery. And because we can give preference, one of the units will definitely be a Milton person, and then the other one will be open to this open lottery, and anybody's eligible to apply for, but it'll be a lottery that takes place.
I think that we might push for having them both resident preference, given the fact that the open lottery is meant to make sure that minorities have an adequate opportunity to apply for the units. And I think that Milton is a very diverse community, and probably has adequate diversity so that both units should receive a resident preference. That would be perfectly legal, and I think that it should be. Since the zoning does require maximum resident preference, I think that we should push back at DHCD on their requirement of 70%.
And if I may ask, where would it be publicized?
I don't know. That's, since the Milton Housing Authority will be doing it, it will be up to them to publicize it.
At the very least, in The Times. And the transcript would make sense, and it would be probably advertised elsewhere also.
Can I also do a press release to the other papers? Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else for Citizens Speak? I see two people.
Louis Bogneris, formerly of 11 Brookside Park, I'm now up at 22 Mountain Laurel, but my daughter and granddaughter will be living at 11 Brookside Park, so I'm still very interested. I just want to say that I have just written a letter to the Conservation Commission, setting out the terrible, terrible way that the Brookhill roadside looks. I set it all out, and I asked them for another meeting. We met with them at least three or four times last year. We all received a plan on how the plantings were going to be, and it was going to look wonderful and marvelous. They brought a half a dozen pots last year, put them there, didn't plant them, and they stayed there all winter and died. They're still there. It looks terrible. As far as the building is concerned, they took off some of the graffiti. Mrs. Proctor had asked that they leave up the ivy, because that prevented graffiti. The back of the building was stripped, was painted, and it's now covered with more graffiti. Something has to be done. I've asked for the meeting with the Conservation Commission. They probably have just received a letter. So, I intend to sit on that one and see what happens. We were all there, you people were there, some of you were there when we had the meeting. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please introduce yourself for the cameras.
Good evening, I'm Bob Sheffield, president of 38th Green Trail. I also am a lawyer and have offices in this mountain square. And I have been involved in the community for many years, many decades. I believe that part of the reason we're such a great community is the two ages, health and homes. We're blessed to have a Milton hospital in our community, and we're also blessed to have so many alternatives of senior citizen housing. However, looking at the bylaw, there's one huge area that is noticeable by its absence, and that is anything that would pertain to allowing any kind of assisted living facility or nursing home. Both of these are needed to complement what we already have in the town. The only nursing facility that we have, nursing home facility, was done by the Board of Appeals, approved by the Board of Appeals. And if an assisted living facility were to be proposed in Milton, it would have to be done by approval of the Board of Appeals, since there is nothing in the bylaw that would permit it. I've done some work on this, and if you'd be good enough to pass those around, I could suggest that the Planning Board consider this, and at the next meeting, or town meeting, whenever it is, a very simple change be made to it. And that would permit or require a permit issued by the Planning Board be provided or be required for any assisted living or nursing home. And the permit would-- and the permit would put limitations and appropriate conditions, safeguards in writing that would be necessary for the, either a nursing home or an assisted living. This would provide, to put this into effect, would require two lines in our bylaw, and also one section in our parking, because the parking considerations should be in the parking section of the bylaw. And knowing that many seniors and children of seniors are really bothered by the fact that there are no assisted living provisions in Milton, and if any parent has to go out to an assisted living facility, it has to be outside the town. I think that there is a need for it, and I think that the need should be considered before we have an application in front of us and find that the application cannot be controlled because it's not provided for in our bylaws.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sheffield called me yesterday, yesterday, and mentioned this, and so I invited him to come to Citizens Speak and bring it before you for our consideration. I'll tell you what I told him with regard to schedule, because it actually affects some of the other things we're doing tonight, which is, the selectmen did not open and close the warrant on September 1st for the November special town meeting. They are looking at doing that on September 14th, and it is about 99% likely that they're going to put off the special town meeting from November to January, in part because of a citizens' petition for a zoning change that we received. I checked with the chair of the warrant committee, and for a January special town meeting, we would have to have any language that we would consider, whether for the citizens' petition, if we choose to sponsor that, or for something like this. We would need that language done by the beginning of November, so we should keep that into consideration. Other than that, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Sheffield about his proposal? And we can, of course, put it on the agenda for next time and take it up fully, but I just want to give you a chance to ask some questions now.
Yeah, well, educate me. I assume that there was assisted living at Fuller?
There is not assisted living at Fuller. There are enhanced services, so if somebody is going downhill, or if somebody needs meals provided, there are meal facilities, meal plans, et cetera. Also, if somebody needs to be called in for helping somebody, a person that has a unit at Fuller, that can be arranged, but it is not an assisted living facility. It is not licensed by the state as an assisted living facility, and we really don't have any in the town of Milton.
Thank you.
We probably want to have a minimum lot size for these things. So, I mean, think about it, and maybe I've kept some ideas as to what sort of space for reasonably sized assisted living facility. I know that they come in various sizes, but there probably isn't average.
Well, I think that based on the parking requirements or whatever, you'd need a certain amount of space, and I think that an individual acre lot would obviously not be properly considered, and I think that's maybe one of the things that wanted to be added to the article. I tried to prepare it in the simplest possible way, and that was the simplest possible way that I could think of.
I think the notion is a good one. I think it would take some research, you know, on our part to see how the communities have handled issues of what the requirements would be in lot size and things like that. So I think it'd take some work. I think, you know, the annual town meeting is certainly more realistic than to think that something would be ready for a special, you know, but just, I think the notion of considering that and zoning is a good one.
Well, if not having a special town meeting until January, I think it would be, you know, quite attainable. I would hate to see it go off to May, because it would not become effective until the Attorney General approves it, which would be next September, which is a year from now, and a lot can happen in a town like this with the new year.
Any other questions for Mr. Sheffield? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill and Diane, if we could put this on our agenda for the next meeting. The selectmen will have met by then, and will know whether or not we have a January special town meeting. Anybody else for Citizens Speak? In that case, the next item on our agenda is 131 Elliot Street for a continued public hearing. If you would like to come forward. While you guys are setting up, do you mind if we quickly take somebody else who's been waiting for a while? All right, so in that case, I'm going to call to get forward 1661 Canton Avenue?
No.
No, not that one?
The one right above there.
That one. No, we'll do that after this.
Continue. You have a weird people sitting there waiting, and--
It's going to require, it's going to be a discussion anyway. Sorry, for those of you who are mystified, we're talking about 683 to 685 Brookhill Road. The applicant is not here tonight, but we will be discussing the language anyway. So we're going to take that right after we take 131 Elliot.
Okay. Well, you might also mention that the applicant seems to want to have a further extension of time.
He does, and I was going to, but we're going to be discussing the whole thing after 131 Elliot. Sorry.
These are collated, should be 12 sets. No, there's three per set.
Let's do it that way.
You already have some.
They already have these. So it's just--
Steven Conley, 131 Elliot Street. Good evening, and with me is Warren Daniel, architect, developer.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So I believe you have some drawings for us?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do.
I suppose that we're excluding the audience if we do it that way.
Now, if we have extras of those drawings, can you pass them out?
I'm going to check right this minute.
Yeah, I brought along a dozen copies, figuring that everybody wouldn't, maybe nobody would--
Well, maybe we should get the copies, Bill, and they can turn the easel so that--
Are the copies different from what was in our packet?
Well, if they're the same ones, then you can--
You can give mine out.
Give them to the people in back.
Right.
If we--
Same ones you got.
Okay. Yeah.
Can you get that, I get a few of them.
Is this good? I feel informal sitting, but it's just a good, I guess, if you can see it. We did three sketches, as we talked about last time. The site study or site analysis, a 3D plan of the area, context 3D plan, and then a section of the track side, the north side of the building, which is about two-thirds of the length of it, actually continues off here as a piece. I'm not going to say this is the whole element, but those are the three pieces that we did. And then, I have a, I don't know, how many people have these things, but I have a rundown of the site analysis done by numbers, keyed to numbers on the plan, and we can go through those, and then we can discuss the exterior. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. You're missing a drawing that we were looking for, and perhaps you can make sure that you bring it next time, which is, we still do not have the massing study. We've done that 3D there, but what we really need to see is, see your drawing in the upper right-hand corner.
Yeah.
What we need to see is pull out from that and show us what the opposite corners look like.
Okay. A ground-level context plan?
Yeah, a ground-level context. So if somebody is standing on, you know, in the middle of the street, they can see what your building looks like on one side and what the other buildings look like on the other side. And I have an example here from Two Adams Street that they provided, a bit like that.
Yeah.
And I'll pass this down so you can look at, something like that, but show, this is quite a large building, but show the buildings on either side, so people need to be able to see what your building's going to look like in context.
Sure.
And make sure you show the landscaping. So for those parts on the corner where you've actually got the brick, and you're going to have some trees and things, show that in there as well, so. Okay, having said that, that drawing is still missing.
That's good.
Please take us through what you have.
Obviously, this is a sort of aerial rendering to fit into this 3D bird's-eye map, as they call it. But, okay, starting with the site, and some of this probably is repetitive, but there are a number of pieces that come right out of the zoning and also the existing conditions, obviously, which have to do, I think, with Central being a commercial street and being for small retail, sort of neighborhood retail uses, and that being part of the zoning that is really, I think, we've talked about a lot and is really important. So, but both on this wraparound side and this, we have roughly 20-foot wide, which is quite wide, as you know, sidewalks, relative to what's across the street. It's a little hard to see it here, but it's a similar size to what is on the opposing corner. Um-- corner. Number two, I'll just go through these. Elliott Street, other than the corner on Central Ave, Elliott is residential, with its density and sidewalks made for pedestrian use. As a buffer from Elliott Street, there would be continuous, a continuous line of trees and shrubs along with a low fence along the sidewalk. The building with its four-story massing should be set back from Elliott Street to lessen the apparent density and mass, meaning that this is tree-lined, residential, and really trying to blend with the mostly single-family residences in the neighborhood by means of a 60-foot setback here, which is a public green front yard, really, and the entry here, and then the massing back off that street. Open parking, number three, in the back. Given the size of the program and the massing that develops from that, this area is probably dust for parking with buffering, obviously, from the adjacent sites, both from the road and then the, the west end there. And that, we can get into that further, but there's some street parking and how that parking could be used, but of course, there's interior, in the building parking, garage parking. Number four, wide sidewalk to allow for site amenities and buffer from street. Five, which is this red circle, some kind of a focal massing to anchor the intersection and really make it, as we've talked about quite a bit, have some prominence and sort of a key anchor feel to that corner, and that's, I think, always been a part of, of the variety of designs that we've, we've come up with in this. And here, the track side, we feel like a relatively small track side makes sense because the north side of the building offers views of the Nemont River and throws long shadows in the winter. We did a shading study and it's, you know, way out to here, so that that, the use of that as a site amenity because of its north face is probably not very realistic, and also the adjacency with the, the track makes sense to make that consistent with the rest of the buildings, basically, along the track side, which is roughly 10 feet. The existing building is about zero to three feet setback now, it's really right on. So this is 10 more feet than that. So those are the, the main points. We have a morning sun and a afternoon sun or evening sun indicated, and a few elements like that, but basically, I guess, this lower massing too evolves out of the need to, or the desire, really, to blend the massing on the street, both with the residential and with the commercial down here. Right now, it's one story, as you know, basically across the street. That'll probably change over time, but to scale it down from the four-story to the three-story, which obviously this earlier sketch shows with this being a three-story and then this being a four-story. And then the, the elements on the back, elevation, couple of new ones that have kind of evolved. In general, it's the same idea with it, with the mansard roof and the double windows dormers for the bedrooms, and using a wider, slightly wider dormer for a triple opening, door opening onto a balcony. And this would be the fourth floor balcony, which would be open to above, and then below it is a covered, series of covered balconies, three, the third, second, and first floor. We also have a, a couple of wall sections that show this in context a little bit more, and also show the, the detail on the, the cornice, and, and we're also thinking of introducing a, another molding level right here in order to give the massing a, a slight change of plane at that level, which is the, the second floor level, the ceiling of the second floor level, then the third and fourth. So that's responding to what we talked about last time in the, in the zoning and the interest in, in breaking up the massing. And I'll probably leave it at that for now. It's, the, the program hasn't changed, the unit count, et cetera, parking.
Thank you very much. I'm going to throw it open to the members of the board who might have questions about the drawings or your presentation.
I have a comment, and I've, I made this comment a month and a half ago. On the track side, there has to be a step back of the third and fourth floors. It's in the zoning. You're not far enough away from the, the lot line to qualify for a waiver of that, and I made a suggestion, which was that...
I, I made, yeah, I did get it.
I understand you did, and I'm going to make a suggestion again.
I definitely...
But there be a base, a more attractive base on the first floor, coming out maybe four feet, and then balconies on the first and second floor, and then you eliminate the balconies and you get your step back as required by the zoning. And it has the advantage, it has the advantage of eliminating this quite unsightly basement level along the tracks. It seems to me that people want to see something that's more interesting than what you've got, and since the zoning requires that, it, it seems to me to, it requires a step back, it seems to me that you can just put something in front of that unsightly lower level, and then put balconies on top of it, and you've got your step back without having to re-engineer your building. But you could do it any way you want, but you still need a step back.
One thought I had, one, one thing that Steve and I kicked around is if we were to put balconies along, along the lower two levels, first and second, there would be more balconies than we need, full balconies. But, you know, I, I'd never thought of this before, if these two balconies, say, and these became an extension of the living room, a four-foot internal space, which originally they were, while these could be still balconies because they don't have that other balcony. So do you follow what I mean? It's a, I think it's, we're concerned about building too much balcony, you'd have it in front of the living room and the bedrooms unless you...
But it is the north side, so that you, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be eliminating sunlight.
Right, right. No, it's just...
Well, I have, I, the, the lower level on the tracks, it, it really isn't, it doesn't appeal to me at all. It, it isn't in keeping with the rest of the building. It's, it's sort of a, it looks like sort of an afterthought to me. In other words, you didn't know what to do, so you did nothing.
I think if you take what Alex said, take what, what Warren just said, if you push those bottom two floors out four feet, turn it into living room, you can keep the upper balconies, because that goes back to what Warren said earlier, that the higher you get, the more of the river you see. So they want the balconies on those upper floors, so they don't want to do away with them to take and push them back in, whereas if they take and pull those two first floors out that four feet, extend the living rooms out, I think you both get what you're looking for.
But they don't want to re-engineer the building.
Taking and bringing the building out four feet on each of those units really doesn't do that.
Where the double-hung windows are?
Yeah.
All those forward?
More glass on that side.
And then down.
Or a bigger window.
How do you treat the garage wall? Is that going to be dented?
I think the only, a main question, the only question that comes to mind is what, how this meets the ground, how these decks, balconies come down, and are they on posts? Are they on, on sections of wall, you know, two-foot, three-foot sections, piers, et cetera?
You can deal with that.
Yeah. I mean, I'll have to talk to...
Four feet, can you cantilever it?
I'm sorry?
Can you cantilever it out four feet?
This is being cantilevered now, yeah.
But now we're talking about filling that in.
Yeah, but in, in the, in the case of building these, I think, and also solving the ground level and what the, what the look at the ground floor level is, I think we want to post them.
If you had a house, you could do that, going up four stories and putting it over that.
No, what I'm saying is, you just said that, you just said that you want it to fill in between the balconies, basically, take the double-hungs and put it out.
We said, we said, take and bring these guys out four feet, push those wings out.
Wait a second.
You said the wings, right?
The balconies or the space in between the balconies?
Well, I don't, I, I just mean, Phil, rather than have them in balconies, just fill in the space and have the, the windows come out to the face of the balcony, to the face of the bay, I should say, so that that's interior space as we, as we originally had before.
So you're still talking about the change in articulation from the, two double-hung windows are going to be here in this plane?
Yeah.
Then you're going to bring the balcony out here, but have that be interior space?
Right.
Then you're going to bring the double-hung back to the plane behind it again. What about pushing out the double-hung, so everything's on the same plane, and then the third and the fourth floor are stepped back from that plane?
Well, you don't want a, I mean, this is good in that it breaks up the...
It does break it up.
It breaks up the horizontal thing. I mean, you don't want to eliminate that for...
But that's what I'm trying to find out, is, is that what you're saying?
I think the bays are a sort of key breakup factor, too.
Because from this end of the table, it sounded like you were talking about making it one plane.
What you're talking about is building out that base level where it shows as brick all the way along and bring it out about four feet or whatever it seems to make that thing a step back. And what you had originally talked about was at the third and fourth level, if you get rid of the balconies, it would create an instep for the rest of the building. Is that right?
I'm saying, what you're, what you're doing is, yeah, you have to get rid of the balconies up there, and you, you put your balconies between the...
Between the, yeah, so you create...
Between the bays and, and you have them. I mean, I, I think that what you have to do is you have to figure out how to give yourself a step back, because I don't see that under the zoning you can get a waiver. And it seemed to me that doing something like that, and, and you know, there may be other solutions. My principal problem with the design is I don't like the current cantilevering. I mean, if you did something in half timber and made it sort of a Tudor, a Tudor base, that, that would be fun. I mean, you, you need to do something interesting at that ground level so that the building is, doesn't seem to...
Right.
Rest on nothing.
I don't think there's much Tudor in Milton. I think we want to hold off on the Tudor.
Half timbering?
Well, there's half timber.
Yeah.
Something like that, but big, big structural, but not structural.
To make these structural, basically.
Yeah. They're definitely to make...
And then figure out how you're going to provide the step back, because you really need a step back, and I've given you one idea, and it certainly isn't, you're the architect...
Yeah, I mean, one of the images, you know, that this brings to mind is maybe a three-story triple-decker with, with the porches and the, and the decks and the way they, and I think, I think this should be more integrated than those typically are in terms of how they meet the ground and, and the architectural finesse, which I think you're saying, too. In other words, it doesn't want to be sort of a, too much of a sort of stick-built walkway system back there, or balcony system. Do you follow what I mean?
You can keep the same relationship of the planes for the third and the fourth floor and just shift them back. So, you know, you've got the double-hung and the bay, just shift them back a little bit, and that obviously is going to change what it looks like on the front, because you're wanting, you're going to want to keep the same amount of interior space.
Yeah.
But that might be another way of doing it, so.
So, yeah.
Anybody else?
How, how does the fact that the train station is there affect that, the design of facade?
Well, as you know, the canopy is right here.
How high is it?
Existing canopy. It's, I've got a, I don't have it with me, but a photograph of, probably right about at that first floor level, here, floor level, probably about 10 feet. And I think we want to be able to give an attractive facade and, and, you know, a useful connection so that between the canopy, which is where people are probably, you know, in foul weather, like this week, sticking under and then spreading out the rest of the time.
Warren, the, the existing station now...
Yeah.
How many windows does it encompass on your, your first floor? You see the window you have in the basement there on the parking?
Yeah.
How, how big is that station?
Well, when you say the station, the, the canopy?
Well, the, are they going to have a wall on the lot line?
There is a wall. There is a current, a retaining wall.
So no one's going to be able to see those windows anyways?
Well, the wall is, is low at that point in this corner, and then it just, you can see it just steps up or rises up.
But how, how much of, of that wall is going to be obscured by the...
The canopy?
The structure of, of the station and so forth? You've got one, two, three, four, five, you've got eight windows.
Yeah. I think these, these first two. I mean, that's a good point to, to look. We have it in photographs.
Seems like it's more than that, it's a big one, station.
But the canopy is only about maybe three bays, I would guess.
Yeah, I guess I'm just guessing.
I would say about three, and then beyond that is that handicap ramp.
Right, the handicap ramp back here. But I was thinking of the structure of it is really the canopy.
Will the MBTA do anything because you're going to be building a, a big building there? Might they reconfigure their station?
That's a good question. I, I haven't talked about it.
They just rebuilt it years ago.
There'll be a fence there, though. There has to be a security fence.
Fence?
Yeah. It's required by the MBTA.
So you're not going to be able to see too much of that so-called foundation?
No.
What's the, do you know what the materials for the security fence are? Do they have a requirement of particular materials?
I haven't looked into it, it's just, you know, it has to be six feet.
Be interesting to know what that is.
What it has to be.
Well, I mean, they're going to make a proposal.
Right.
And I would think that it would not be a chain-link fence. I would think it would be a steel, a steel fence, black with, perhaps...
Ivy growing on it.
I think ivy would be good, but I do think, but I do think that people standing at the station, even if it's obscured, I think the people standing at the station should be given a attractive something behind the fence. In other words, I think that the wall, as it currently is proposed, what?
Isn't that the monsign?
Yeah. It doesn't have to be growing. I mean, it can be, it can be architectural, but it still should be more interesting than what is currently being proposed, even if it is somewhat obscured by the, by the canopy.
It would be probably a good idea to find out if the MBTA requires certain materials so that we know that going forward and don't say, well, you need to do this, and find out that they don't actually allow whatever it is we've required, so that'd be worth finding out. Any other questions, either on this or the site plan or the very handy 3D aerial? Yes, Eddie?
Thank you, Emily. Warren, the corner element there is still square, and that bothers me. Can we make it, somehow make the corners, each corner curved like they do in, like in post office canopies and so forth? No, I don't mean a canopy, I mean the cupola.
Mm-hmm.
Can we, can we get, all make that softer, rather than square, make it softer with some line?
Sure.
The other thing is, can we make it more, I always... Because the other thing is, can we make it more, I always, maybe you have further plans that I haven't seen, but it seems drab, this is the key element of, of sightline, it's right there, several angles. Are you going to dress it up with something or?
Yeah, I mean, this, this, it doesn't even show the windows in, in there.
Yeah, right.
So it is as literal as it should be, probably this sketch is a little more accurate.
And can we put something, perhaps a weather vane, some, something that, to give more traction, I, I know it's not, it's not finished in this plan, but a weather vane or something to entertain the eye as you're coming down.
Yeah, sure.
And my second comment is the green area, the common green area?
Yeah.
I don't know what your plans are, but I, I don't think that should be left open without some security fencing around it. Again, wrought iron, perhaps?
It, it has fencing.
Oh, it does, okay, I didn't see that.
Yeah.
And what, what, how high is the fencing?
Um, I think it's four feet, what we have is four feet wrought iron.
Um, just a quick comment on that, don't forget that's supposed to be a public amenity, so it can't be locked off from the public.
Well, my point, Emily, is this, during the daytime, I think it would be safe as a public amenity for people walking by with children and so forth, but in the evening, I think to prevent loitering and so forth, you, we should allow it to be secured in the evening with a gate. I think that would fulfill the obligation, Emily, I think.
Okay.
But just for safety, and, and so we're both ways, but those make a good point.
Yeah, of course.
Warren, underneath the bump out, is that open? Is this open?
Yes.
Look, oh, good.
Yeah, it's an entry porch, covered.
So the doors are in trouble?
Yeah. Again, it's like this, this is eight, 10 feet deep by 100 feet wide, covered canopy, basically, or recessed arcade.
Any other questions? All right, so for next time, I'm going to list what I heard and people jump in if they, if I miss anything. We want you to work on the foundation, a few from the track. We want you to work on the setback for the third and fourth floors, want to see how you're considering the canopy and how the, that part will relate to what's there from the T, since they just fixed it up.
Yeah.
Um, we'd like you to look at the, look at the tower and the structure of the tower, possibly more rounded, and also give us a little bit more detail on how it looks, discuss the fencing on both sides. What else?
Um, I want to ask- The ground level renderings with the context?
Yeah, the context, absolutely. Pete?
Can I ask a question? How far back are the residences on Elliot Street set from the curb?
Along here?
Yeah.
About 60 feet.
The residences?
Oh, the houses, the existing houses along here?
Yeah.
Uh, they're probably about 15 feet.
15 to 20 feet.
20 feet.
Probably 20.
And how does that relate to your design? Well, how does that affect the design?
It's a little easier to see it here. I think, I, I think the design that carries through is, is really more than the building, it's a, it's a tree line running all the way down to this point right here, and because this building is bigger and a different size, different shape, everything, than the signal houses, it's appropriate to set that back more, although, again, this is roughly 20 feet, 23 feet it is, setback right here is a lower element, so that, that does, you know, agree pretty much with the existing setback lines of the houses. But basically, we, you know, we wanted to try to create a foreground for the, for the building that's a little off the street there and in a, in a green space.
I think it, it makes sense to run that setback and not have it, you know, and built elements keep that green element, you know, reflecting the, the setback, you know, that residential street to keep that green all along that edge.
Yeah, to that point of-
So that it has that feeling in the scale of that residential area.
I think you could start fleshing out the landscaping a little bit now, where the parking is going to be, you talk about the buffer, but we should start seeing that, you know, you don't have to have a plant list necessarily.
Right.
But let's see what that's going to look like, let's see what that's, the setback from the front and the sides is going to look like.
As you know, we do have that from before, we don't really change that.
Yeah.
So we'll-
But you could start incorporating it again.
Right.
And on the Central Avenue side, where the brick sidewalk is, are you also proposing street trees along there?
There are, there are trees in the plan.
Okay.
There's, I think, three existing.
Okay.
And I think we're calling for a couple of new ones to addition.
So starting to flush that out a little bit would be helpful.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Just a couple continuing questions out of the context. The, the central clean herbs across the street, how tall is that building?
Uh, this? That's one story.
And so how does that relate heightwise from Central Avenue to the proposed building?
It's probably 10 feet, 12 feet. I think what it relates to, obviously, is that we have this strong band across here where we have brick on one side, and the commercial band, if you want to call it that, is basically what these one-story elements are like now. I think, you know, that's referenced certainly with this band. At time, over time, there may be bigger buildings there, I would think. But, I mean, who knows? That would be, not, not, I'm not trying to throw anybody out of their business here either, certainly, but-
It can be a challenge lining up with current buildings to reference those, knowing that 30 years down the line, something could change.
Yeah, and certainly you can only design a building to what might be in the environment at some point in the future, so far.
Right.
But I think, you know, this is the, the size and scale enassing that the zoning seemed to want, and I think fits is appropriate for the site.
Are there any existing elements, are there any elements on the existing site that are, you know, worthy of consideration in the design?
Um, there's a tree back here, a maple, that we're keeping in the design, it's right about on the edge of the parking, and I believe there's a few trees here that we're going to be looking at for screening, keeping in there, too, but basically, all the trees, these are Elms, proposed for the, the whole front of it here, is primarily new, plant wise, yeah.
That's the only existing element, that's the first thing?
Side element. Yeah.
What about the existing stairs and existing stone walls, the historic walls?
Um, in this, in this courtyard area right here?
Yeah.
Um, you know, again, and maybe this is a judgment call that you agree with or don't agree, but this area for the commercial and, and the street front feels very important to anchor the corner and not have it as an open, big, open landscaped area. It's philosophically different, I'm not saying that, that's wrong necessarily, but I think the point of commercial along the ground floor on these three sides, or two and a half sides, seem to be an inherent part of the, the zoning and what you're looking for. So I, I don't think you want to bring people back here into commercial space with, with that grand, open space.
I guess I disagree.
Yeah.
It's just me.
I understand.
Is there any other way to reuse it, you've got, I mean, you do have a green open space, are there ways of reusing the elements that are currently on the site elsewhere? Not necessarily keeping them where they are.
Well, we'll certainly look at that, what, what the elements are. There's, there's a stair and a stone wall and-
Worth checking to see.
A couple of picnic benches, I think.
Useful. All right, anything else, because we've got a long agenda tonight?
Okay.
Now, next question, oh, sorry. All right, I haven't forgotten about you, Margaret, well, I did, but you reminded me. Before I call on the public to speak, will you be able to come back to our meeting on the 22nd, or will you need to come back the first meeting in October?
So that, that's two weeks. October.
First meeting in October? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's better, so that will be four weeks.
Four weeks, okay. So we will continue it to 6:40 on the first, after we've had our public speak, we will continue it to 6:40 on the first week of October. What's the date of that?
I think it's the 8th.
It's the 8th, thank you. Now, who'd like to speak?
Margaret Donnelly, from Central Avenue, you've been talking about the outside appearance of the building, especially along the track side. I haven't heard anything more about the materials, which I think would be quite important when we're talking about the appearance, whether it's along the track side or the front. I believe that Mr. Duffy was talking about a cupola at the beginning in the front of the building to soften the appearance of the building, am I correct in that? All right. The question now is, pertains to materials.
Yes.
And I believe that I heard that they plan to use hardy plank for the whole, for the whole building, is that correct?
Except for the first level, the commercial space of the brick.
Except for the first, and what would that be?
Brick.
Brick.
And the roof, the roof shingles up here, to, I'm sorry.
I realize there is an expense involved, but somehow tying in 36 Central Avenue with 131 Elliot is, aside from the expense, is there any reason why you couldn't have brick, especially in the front, in that section where the cupola may go?
So you have, the tower, for example, might be all brick?
The whole front, similar to what they've done at 36 Central, to tie it in with 36 Central.
The, we can look at that, we haven't, thank you, sorry, the first meeting in October is the 13th, not the-
13th.
So.
Okay.
The idea has been to indicate the commercial part of the building with brick, and we want to avoid the buildings looking as though they were, you know, cookie cutter of each other, but I don't see why there isn't any reason we could look at brick for the tower and see how else, this, this almost has two fronts because of the way that it's, it's got frontage on two main streets here, so it's a slightly different building in that respect than 36, which has one main focus for it. But there's no reason why we can't look at possibly doing brick elsewhere on the tower. I wouldn't, not personally, and the other members are free to jump in, I'm not sure I'd do brick on both full facades, I think that might be too much there, but I think definitely keeping it to the commercial and possibly looking at the tower, 2 Adams Street did their tower as a, it's not that they built it yet, but in the discussions, they did that as a separate material, and we may want to think about that as well, so.
And you know, the, the issue of color has, was always a conservative line, and what will that hardy plank, what color will that hardy plank be?
To be determined.
To be determined.
We have to commit?
We're getting there.
I'd just like to say that this is a design, this is concept, and materials have never been discussed, and we are, they're totally open, they're totally open as far as I'm concerned. We know that they're, they, they talk hardy plank, but we certainly never said, fine, go ahead, and it's going to, this is a, this is a concept, and the concept will be fleshed out as we go along.
We will be getting to the nitty gritty fairly soon.
Thank you so much.
And at least there wouldn't be too much brick on that, the tower, because the first floor is open.
Right.
The top floor has got some sort of a man's side roof, so that would be black asphalt slates, you're only talking two floors of brick.
Yeah, when, when we get to it, I think we should consider different options.
We looked at that previously.
Yeah.
I don't know if you remember, we were, we were looking at variations on brick for the tower.
All right, thank you. Anybody else want to speak on 131 Elliot? All right, seeing none, we will continue this to 6:40 on 10/13.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
To 7 o'clock.
You want to do 7 o'clock, do we already have something at 6:40?
Yes.
Oh, my apologies, 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, no, wait, that's, it's on the 13th, it's not the next meeting.
Right. Didn't I say, I said the next meeting at 13, all right. On October 13, at 7 o'clock. We'll do 7 o'clock. So that will give us a few other things to do. All right, for those who have been patiently waiting, we are now going to start our discussion of 683 to 685 Rush Hill Road, and we have no applicant because he had an unavoidable conflict, however, we do have the language that Alex has written for us for the decision and for the homeowners' trust, and the board, because we were not able to have meetings in August, has not actually discussed this language. So I would spit to you that this would be a good time for the board to raise any questions they might have on the language, or if they're happy with it being final. I know we've got at least one person who wants, at, at least two people who would like to speak on this, so I'll recognize you in a moment, and the applicant has requested that we not sign this until our actual next meeting on the 22nd, and will send us a letter to that effect, he did send us a letter to that effect, but he didn't have the right dates on it, so Bill sent it back to him, requesting the correct dates. But I understand from at least one of the people who's requested to speak that they would, if possible, like us to sign it tonight, and they will bring that up to us, so why don't I ask the people who wanted to speak to come forward? You can decide who wants to come forward first, and let us know what you're thinking, and then we will go from there. And please identify yourselves.
Tim Curran, 642. Rush Hill Road, I said I'll have diagonally cross the street and also represent the neighborhood association that's been working with the developers and the abutters, et cetera, on this. Possibly just a point of clarification, we received, or one of our members received an email from the board that tonight's discussion of this topic was going to be postponed. So my concern is that if there is going to be a discussion of the elements of these documents, that the abutters, who are now under the assumption that this discussion is postponed, because half of them aren't here, may miss out on some opportunity to speak. In talking with most of them, I don't think there's a concern.
Okay.
But I just want to express to you that the, the message has been conveyed to, to the abutters, et cetera, that there will be no discussion tonight because it's been postponed.
Okay.
So that's the anticipation.
All right, so that's slightly problematic, I did not know that message had gone out.
That's, that's the email that I got secondhand, so.
Who sent the email?
I got it from Charles De Vegvar, and he received it from a member of the board. Now, I don't know whether it was a member or secretary or Bill or-
Bill, did you send something out?
Not an email, I stated that they had filed for a continuance, they had submitted a letter to continue the hearing.
You know, it very well may be a, one of those telephone issues, you know?
Right, exactly.
But the, the message that got out to us was that the discussion was, the meeting was going to be postponed. Now, if that's incorrect, that's our mistake, but unfortunately, those who may want to express something are not here to say so.
Well, why don't you express what you have, and, I mean, I suppose that we can keep postponing this forever.
It'd be nice to get it off our plates, but yes, there's, we, we ourselves don't have a deadline as long as-
I mean, I, I wrote this thing in July, I've had zero comments, except Pete picked up a few typos, I've had zero comments about it from the developer, from anyone in the neighborhood, and it seems to me that waiting another month and then having people come in with a million comments saying this, that, and the other thing is, is no good and has to be changed and, oh, we don't like it. I mean, I keep anticipating that the developer is going to, you know, have his attorney rewrite the whole thing, and then it will be back at square one, and I, it just seems to me that people were asked, you know, when I sent this out and said it would be discussed and mentioned that I'd had no communication, so I didn't, I didn't solicit them, but I've had none.
I- I see.
And it would be, it would be useful to me to know if people are generally supportive, or if they have, you know, what they're thinking, rather than have this a secret until some future meeting.
I think it would be worth discussing tonight, we certainly don't have to sign it tonight, but at least if we're discussing it, people will get a chance to listen to the discussion, and then come back in and weigh in at our next meeting. But the board should have a chance to discuss it.
I, I agree, I was just letting you know.
I appreciate that.
Why the attendance was a little low tonight, and I have not heard anything negative. So I think that generally, there's some, some good, solid support for the two documents that, you know, we've seen.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. I did speak to Mr. Resito on another matter, and at the same time I said, hey, we haven't heard from you on this, what gives? He told me at the time, but he was fine with it. But I understand from our conversation today, Bill, that he's actually having somebody else look at it, so.
Just his partner, but he just, he cannot be here.
Right, it was an unavoidable conflict, we understand, these things happen, yeah.
He just cannot get here tonight.
Right, which is fine, and I certainly wouldn't want to sign something based on a conversation I had with him two weeks ago, so.
Although if he's reviewed it, and everybody's reviewed it, and he's got no issues with it, instead of asking for an extension, he could have written this letter that said, you know, the document has, we're reviewing, is fine, and we, that way we could execute it.
He could have done, but unfortunately he didn't.
I know, but I just, I don't understand, because I understand.
Since we have the neighbors who think that there is, the thing has been continued, just for the sake of appearances.
Yes. Now, we had somebody else who requested to speak, Mr. Fallon, would you like to come up and let us know, and introduce yourself with a camera on?
I'm Edward Fallon, representing my mother. Beverly Fallon is one of the owners. I came down here to the last meeting, and I know that it was canceled. Mr. Resito in this, and the applicant for this whole subdivision, I'm still totally for the subdivision, so I want to make very clear. I want to thank the board and also the Brushhill Road Association, him and everyone, because they did a really nice job on a lot of the documents and everything that, you know, in the subdivision and all the work, I think it's really nice, the trust is written up really nice. But I would like to move forward for the subdivision approval. I don't know if, now, I understand that Mr. Resito is the applicant, I don't know if, just hypothetically, if you approved it, and then the applicant changed after you approved it, what would be the implications? These are the questions I'm just asking the board right now. What would keep the board from moving ahead to approve the subdivision with or without Mr. Resito? I just, I'm just asking that question also, is there something that can, that you, do you have to have him to approve the subdivision? Also, what are the red lines or changes that are made by Alex, and I don't have the red line or changes on this?
There are none. I rewrote the trust. This trust is basically a new document, and you've got to read it from scratch.
Oh, I did, and I liked it.
And there are no red lines, because I changed it so much that.
Okay.
Ran out of red ink.
I ran out of red ink, exactly.
Well, how about this, I don't know if I have the most recent.
Right.
Well, that is something that you're going to have to ask Mr. Clark about. And the most recent is what I sent out in July.
Oh, okay, okay, so I think.
So you probably do, yes.
Well, the copy we have is dated eight one two thousand eleven.
But that is still the same thing I sent out in July.
Okay, but that's probably the most recent, so if you're reading the one that is dated on the bottom left as eight one two thousand eleven, that's the current document.
This is the subdivision.
That's interesting. Oh, there it is, number one, I've got two.
I'm simply saying that that is the same document that was sent out in July.
Right.
So.
So what you've got is current.
Okay, now, the, the next question is like, what I was mentioning is that, how, you know, what is to keep this from moving ahead? Now, does the applicant have to be here or approve it?
We've just heard that, we've just heard that there is a matter of comedy, that neighbors, if they want to come in and, have been misled into waiting until the next meeting.
Right, so we'll wait until the next.
And.
Yes.
The fact of the matter is that if we, this is supposedly designed to be acceptable to the neighborhood and to the developer.
Oh, absolutely.
And to avoid an appeal.
Correct, absolutely.
And so we want to treat the developer as well as we can.
But what happens, like, just hypothetically, the developer all of a sudden disappears?
Well, then, you, you know, then we'll probably get a new developer to substitute himself. If we decide this, and then there's a new developer, it would be an amendment, I don't know, I don't think, so I think the new developer could substitute himself, but if the new developer wanted to do something different, we'd have to then have another public hearing.
Right.
And it just makes sense.
So then we'll just leave it as it is and wait.
Wait another two weeks.
But what happens if, and the next question is, can the developer keep delaying this? Now, that's where I want to, and can please the board also put in their meeting minutes that it was the developer, Mr. Resito, that asked for that delay?
Yes.
Because I want that in writing to definitely confirm, and also for the last time, that was the developer again that asked. And also, Mr. Weissad, you mentioned also that you had sent the comments off to the developer, and he, you have not received any comments.
I sent the document off.
The document off, and you haven't received any comments from him?
Right.
And could that please be put in the meeting minutes also, so that we can document that, you know, the developer has been well informed, the developer's been asked many times, and the developer's asked for a continuance, a continuance, and a continuance? And I just want that to be reflected in the, you know, by the.
All the continuances have always been reflected in the meeting minutes, that won't change.
Well, no, well, the problem is we didn't have a meeting for six weeks, so I, I mean, I.
Right, but in, in the minutes, it's.
They will say.
Right, yes, it's always been done.
That's all.
And your answer is that, no, the developer does not have to be physically present for us to render our decision, and no, and yes, we can render our decision at any time, but as Alex pointed out, it is only politic. If you are trying to write a decision that's not going to be appealed, to have both parties present, so.
What happens if you don't have to worry about an appeal by the developer if there's some information?
If you don't what?
I mean, if there's some information, if you could actually show that you guys could approve it, and, you know, we don't need the developer.
Well, in that case, we're still going to wait till the next week because of miscommunication.
Because of the neighbors, absolutely, and that's, I'm all for that.
Yeah, I think your answer is you're waiting till next week, but we will still allow the board.
Two weeks from now.
Yeah, sorry, to the next meeting, two weeks from now, thank you. Getting my meetings confused this week. But we're still going to allow the board to discuss it.
No, absolutely.
Because we haven't had the opportunity yet.
You don't hear, like I said, you don't hear any complaints from everything I'm reading, I actually think it's, it's very well done, so, and thank you again, Alex, for that, I like that whole trust, and it comes out really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do think maybe we should ask Bill to inform the developer that at our next meeting, we will be taking up with the intent of executing this document, whether he's in attendance or not, so that he can.
I agree. All right.
Well, wait a minute, Bill. You're going to get something asking for an extension until the day after next meeting.
You already have it?
It doesn't have dates on it.
There's no date.
So this one doesn't mention a date.
Doesn't have a date.
Yes, it has dates. He sent that back without the dates, we have to have the dates on it.
Extend.
We don't need to know when this extension goes to.
Right, it was supposed to.
Yeah, you sent, you sent an email back to him, because he copied on me with the actual dates on it.
Do you have an email that he agreed to it?
No, this is the problem, is he sent this.
I've got the one with three lines on it.
Bill sent the email back saying these are the, with the dates on it, he did not respond with a secondary email, confirming the dates.
It was the twenty-third, I think it was.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it was continued, to be continued till the twenty-second.
And you have it in writing somewhere?
No.
They're saying they do.
Well, they may have got it after lunch.
The twenty-third?
That's what he's saying.
I have it by email, but I told him to go and give me the, the signature, when he sent the signature back, he put the bottom three lines on.
Right.
Which is why I knew it was there, you can see the space.
Yes.
Well, what did he, did he say, has he said anything in writing that holds him to?
He sent me, he sent me a piece asking for, what you see here plus three lines, the other three lines were to be continued until seven o'clock on the twenty-second, and it allows you the time to do your filing until the twenty-third.
He said this to you.
He sent it to me minus the signature.
He said this to you in, on the telephone.
Yes, we read it to each other.
All right, so on the telephone, he requested an extension to the twenty-third.
The twenty-second at seven o'clock.
To the twenty-third, the day after the meeting.
A continuance to the twenty-second at seven, and an extension to the twenty-third.
Till the twenty-third.
Right.
For your filing.
Okay.
We need to get that in writing with his signature.
Tomorrow.
I get it tomorrow, I don't know how she dropped the three lines, I didn't notice the three lines.
All right, and if you don't get it tomorrow, we will simply file the decision that I've written.
Well, we'd have to have a vote to do that.
We'd have to vote to do that.
Is that motion?
Yes, I would.
I'd move that if he doesn't request the extension tomorrow, that we file the decision that.
And.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me just get this thing out. The, the document entitled Milton Planning Board Subdivision Approval, Beachwood Estates, six eighty-five Brushhill Road, Milton, Massachusetts, Joseph Boyle Adele, owners, Anthony Resito, applicant, at the bottom of which, in the left-hand corner, it says six eighty-three to six eighty-five Brushhill, the seven twenty-seven eleven.
Yep.
And that is seven pages, and attached to that will be a document entitled Declaration of Trust, Beachwood Estates Homeowners Association Trust and Declaration of Obligations, Covenants, and Restrictions, which has, at the bottom, it says six eighty-three to six eighty-five Brushhill, eight one twenty-eleven, and it has eleven pages.
Okay.
And so the motion is, yes.
Want to look at page six of the declaration?
Yeah.
You left a hole. You left a hole for a specific word.
I did, but I, I think that.
If you, if you're going to take and take this vote, you're going to have to fill that word.
Yes. We'll do that under the discussion, let him finish making the motion, so we've got the motion under the table, and then we will discuss that.
I think that.
Here's the word.
What? Page six.
Well, I mean, the word on page six will be shall.
Of this one, of the subdivision.
With the word on page six of the subdivision approval, is that right?
Yeah, I think we still have to discuss that.
All right, but the motion is that that word be shall.
Right.
For the purposes of this particular, if he doesn't file for the extension tomorrow.
All right, so let me repeat your motion.
Well, I don't think I finished it.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out.
Okay, so the motion is that the planning board, if the applicant does not request an extension of time for the board's filing its decision until September twenty-third, if he does not do that.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
By.
Four thirty.
Eleven o'clock.
He's being nice.
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, all right.
By eleven o'clock.
No, but I need half an hour to go and do it.
Right.
All right, then, the board, then I move that the planning board approve the documents previously described.
Yep.
Of the subdivision approval, to which will be attached the Declaration of Trust as its decision, and file them with the town clerk as such.
Okay.
Tomorrow, prior to the close of business.
Is there a second on the motion?
And in that, in the, the word on page six, having to do with the extinguishment, extinguishment of the easement, even though I am inclined to think that it should be should, I'm moving that word be shall.
All right. Does everybody have that? Is there a second? Is there a second even for the purposes of discussion?
Sure, I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion made and seconded on the table, discuss.
Well, the purpose of this is, since our time extension expires tomorrow, if we take no action in the absence of him asking for an extension, then he could say that the board didn't act in a timely manner.
Correct.
So this is a way to protect us so that the board acts in a fight, in a timely manner without an extension, but what we really want is a legitimate request for extension from Mr. Resito.
Okay.
And this, this is, well, there's three lines missing, but this is.
That's inadequate.
It's inadequate.
Because it doesn't have the date. On the way home, he'll.
Two seconds, I see you.
He'll get the call.
We have a question from the audience, and I want to bring up another point, yes, Mr. Fallon.
I want to add that, Mr. Resito, I don't think it was marked extinguishing right-of-way at Brushhill Lane.
That's going to be part of our next discussion, yeah.
I just wanted to let the board know is that Brushhill Lane is used, I mean, that access from, I use it, so that, that, Brushhill, that access to Brushhill Lane, we use it, we file it and we use it, so that, that, that has always been used. It's paved and it's used, just to be aware of.
That is extremely helpful, as per our discussion.
It is, we use it, I use it, I especially use it sometimes in the winter, I can get up my hill up through the front driveway, I come up through Brushhill Lane and come down through the back, so I would never, even if I was living there now, I would never want to see that extinguished, or at least maybe limited a little bit when the subdivision goes in, and the reason why is because of maybe utilities and things like that that have to be bought in, it might be a lot easier, and the subdivision people still allow the utilities to be able to come through that area, instead of maybe going down to the front I am, so I would not, personally, I know Mr. Resito probably would not want to see that right-of-way extinguished.
Thank you very much for your comment, but we appreciate it. Okay, that does bring us to the second part of this motion. So the first part of the motion essentially was, we're going to file this if we don't hear it from Mr. Resito by eleven o'clock. The second part is, if you look at page six of the actual subdivision approval, up at the top, there's a blank, and what that is, is a followover from page five on the paragraph on the discharge of right-of-way. And what Alex is saying is, the full sentence would be, according to Alex's motion, is accordingly, used of the right-of-way by construction, oh, sorry, next sentence, the right-of-way as shown on the plan has not been shown to serve any useful purpose and shall be extinguished by the applicant. Now, a question came up at one of our earlier meetings as to whether or not we should extinguish this right-of-way, and in the past discussions during the public hearing, at one point, Mr. Resito said that he would, and then at one point that he said that he wouldn't, and in part that is due to discussions with some of the abutters. And I have a letter here from James Stone of Stone and Stone, who is representing the abutters, and this was given, sent to me to be read at our last meeting, only we didn't have it, so I'm going to read it now so that you have it. Says, "To Planning Board, Town of Milton, re six eighty-five Brushhill Road," and just, actually, is Mr. Stone here? Okay, thank you, I'm not sure I was going to recognize him by sight. Okay, so, "I represent the abutters of the six eighty-five Brushhill Road Development, Charles and Rosemarie De Vegavar, of fifty Brushhill Lane, and I'm writing regarding the so-called easement that the owners of said Brushhill Road property, as well as the developer, believe exists, giving access and use of Brushhill Lane. While the De Vegavars believe that any easement which may have existed in the past has by now long lapsed, I believe it would be best if the board clarified that the new development is not to have any access to Brushhill Lane. There are a number of case precedents that indicate that the board does have the right to make this a condition of approval. I would be very happy to provide this case precedent to the board if it would be of help. We note that preventing the access to Brushhill Lane does not just benefit the immediate abutters over whose land the easement to Brushhill Lane lies, rather, it would benefit all residents on Brushhill Lane and therefore is well within the scope of matters the planning board is charged with reviewing on behalf of the community. Brushhill Lane is a private way serving the residents of said lane. Giving access to Brushhill Lane to construction vehicles and other vehicles of the new development would overburden the lane and cause damage to it, causing a financial hardship to the residents of the lane. In short, we continue to suggest that requirements of formal extinguishment of any easement of any easement rights to Brush Hill Lane, as previously promised by the developer, is appropriate and legally permissible. Yours very truly, James W. Stone." So I'm reading that into the record, so you have a request that, um, that this not be extinguished.
But if you, you probably should read what the discharge says, because we basically, what this decision says is that they can't use the, the easement whether or not it's extinguished.
Okay.
There's, there's the easement up Brush Hill Lane from Brush Hill Road, but then off of Brush Hill Road coming into the property. I don't think that's Brush Hill Road. I think that's a separate...
No, it's just a driveway.
It's a, it's a driveway, but the easement in play here is up Brush Hill Lane to the driveway, because that's a private road, and then into the property on the driveway.
Over lots 34 and 50 Brush Hill Lane, leading to Lot 8. It's muddy feet wide.
The attorney, Mr. Stone, from Stone and Stone...
Yes.
Says that whatever rights may have existed have undoubtedly been extinguished or something.
By lapsed, he says.
Have lapsed. Does he give, does he send us a copy of the deed that indicates?
Mr. Fallon indicates that he doesn't think that there is a lapse, since he used the thing, yes.
But nobody has indicated, shown us by what virtue there is this easement right, so that we can determine whether or not there really is such a...
It's extinguished, we don't have to worry about it.
Well, we'll call on you if we need more information. Don't have a back-and-forth between the board and the audience. Sorry, go ahead.
So, so what we're asking him to extinguish is the right all the way from Brush Hill Road up the lane and through the property.
It's from over lots 34...
Okay, so it's just the part...
And 50.
Just the part that is...
The twenty-foot wide part on over lots 34 and 50, Brush Hill Lane.
And we don't distinguish whether he needs to extinguish that prior to construction or whether he can use that during construction and then extinguish it afterwards.
The decision says he can't use it for construction.
Yeah. To be fair, let me read it so everybody can hear what we're talking about. So this is on page five.
Use by...
Yeah, discharge of right-of-way. The subdivision plan shows a way twenty-foot wide leading to Lot 8 over abutting lots at 34 and 50 Brush Hill Lane. Brush Hill Lane is a narrow, private street. During the hearing on the subdivision application, applicant indicated that this right-of-way will be extinguished. The planning board did not further inquire as to the rights and restrictions governing this right-of-way, which currently is not in use. The applicant has failed to make any showing that use of this right-of-way for access to or egress from Lot 8 would be legally permissible, safe, or convenient. There is a requirement that access to and egress from Lot 8 be through its frontage on Beechwood Drive. Accordingly, such access or egress over the right-of-way is prohibited. Applicant has made no showing that use of the right-of-way would be legal, safe, or convenient for construction vehicles, and observations on the ground lead the board to believe that such use would be both unsafe and inconvenient. Accordingly, use of the right-of-way by construction vehicles is prohibited. The right-of-way as shown on the plan has not been shown to serve any useful purpose and shall be extinguished by the applicant.
Well, there's a blank in the document with, and it's either the word would be shall or should, and should would not be the same as shall. Shall would require extinguishment. Should would be a, uh, would not be a requirement.
Right.
And I see that, I see that we would, we would review this again at our next meeting. It's simply for the purposes, if he refuses to extend the time for our decision, I think we should use the word shall, and it's quite possible that, uh, at the next meeting, I, I think the language that I have, that they have to use Beechwood Drive as access and that they can't use the right-of-way as, for construction vehicles, is adequate whether or not the easement is extinguished. But for the purpose of this motion, I use shall, because it would be, uh, the condition that this would be operative would be when the developer had failed to, uh, act in a, in a reasonable way.
Pete, do you have any comments? All those, Bernie and Eddie. Bernie? Eddie?
You know, like I said at the last meeting, I don't know who else might have a right in that right-of-way. And I don't think I'm about to vote to shall extinguish it, because I don't know who I'm hurting. I said it before.
Well, then...
But I'm only going to vote.
I'd be happy to abandon, to use the word should.
That's a friendly amendment and can therefore be simply accepted. Eddie?
Can't we simply say that no construction vehicles shall use this?
We've said it, and we said that access is, uh, going to be through Beechwood Drive.
But that, that lane does not extinguish the right-of-way.
No. But I, I mean, using the word should is, I think, uh, is, is fine with me.
It's advisory rather than...
It's advisory rather than mandatory.
Okay. Does anybody else have any suggestions on that?
You know, I'm just trying to think, you know, why Mr. Rosseto doesn't want to extinguish that right-of-way. It certainly has some value, but if, if they can't use it for access and egress, I'm not sure what that value is.
He thinks he may be able to sell Lot 8 to one of the owners of the lot over which the right-of-way passes.
It's...
In order to, okay.
I was gonna say, it's probably...
So if he extinguishes it, he doesn't think he's going to be able to sell it.
So then he sells it to somebody else.
Well, look, that is, that is the reason, as I understand.
Putting intent into the mouth of somebody who's not here is probably a bad idea.
Well, that's what he told me.
So I'm just saying, he's not here to confirm or...
I understand, I understand that. This, this was what he told me.
Right.
And having him here to, uh, is, is not necessary, because, uh...
So if that's the case...
You know, I don't have to be cross-examined.
Right, so if that's the case, then our decision, which word we use, could affect the economic value of that property.
Shall would most definitely affect the economic value of the property.
I don't think...
Should is merely advisory.
I, I think it was, but I'd let's use the word should. That's fine with me.
Maybe we should use the word should. Now, I don't know if the abutters on Brush Hill Lane will like that.
It's just for, it's just for this one...
Yeah, lot.
One time.
Yeah.
Yes, be, be on, be on your metal for the second.
What if we just deny this?
I don't want to deny it. Well...
Deny the subdivision?
We don't want to deny the subdivision.
Well, that's gonna get his attention.
Well, somewhat. I mean, we...
No, we don't want to do this.
We're too hard.
We don't want to deny it.
It's just a...
I think it'd get a lot of people's attention.
I don't know who I might be hurting by voting shall.
Look, all the, this does is, the applicant discharges whatever rights the applicant has. It doesn't affect anyone else. It doesn't, no one else is a party, and we cannot tell people what to do with their property. If anyone else has an interest in that right-of-way, other than the applicant, then...
They still have that interest, yes.
This does not impact them.
All right. Any more questions from the board? Because I know we had a couple of questions from the audience. Does anybody have any comments?
I like the word should.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Y'all are familiar with it. Do I need to restate it?
With the friendly amendment.
With the friendly amendment of changing shall to should on page six and the blank. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Present.
I didn't ask. Abstentions?
Present.
Okay. All right, so we have four yeses and one present. All right. We will take this up at our next meeting on the...
We may.
Unless he doesn't require an extension.
It is... We could take this up at our next meeting on the 22nd if we receive the extension. If we do not receive the extension, then this matter's closed.
Well, the matter is, the matter will be with the town clerk.
Well, that's true too, yes. Yes, lot, seven. Seven o'clock on, well, we don't have, it's not a public hearing.
It is, it's just a discussion, so we need a...
Yeah, it's a discussion. We don't need a time. So we'll aim for seven o'clock on the 22nd. How's that?
So if he doesn't extend, require the extension, does Bill sign it on our behalf?
Oh, that's...
Yes, he does. It's a decision of the planning board.
So do we need to authorize him to sign it on our behalf?
I, yes, the, the second, that he is empowered to sign on behalf of the board, whatever's necessary.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
All right.
Fine.
Okay. All right. In that case, next item on the agenda is now 1661 Canton Avenue. Slightly later than I told the, uh...
That's...
Sorry about that.
It happens.
Please introduce yourself for the board and the cameras.
James Rich, trustee of Granite Estate Realty Trust.
Welcome.
Thanks. Uh, this is a continuance from July, asking permission to open up the stone wall at 1661 Canton Ave., Lot 2, for the purpose of putting in a driveway to get to a house that shall be built up there.
Excellent. I see.
Or should, shall.
Shall, will.
Will.
And I see you provided us with the, uh, plan that we requested.
Yeah, I sent an email with the un-stamped version, and then I dropped off the... I'll pull it up for the... Is that good? Dropped off the stamped version.
Very nice. All right. Does the board have any questions on this?
Did we have communications about this, Phil?
Yes, we had, we had this. I did send it to the neighbors. I do not know that one of the neighbors is here.
And, uh... Communication from the historic commission.
Yes. Just needed to see if I have it with me. I do. Nope, I do, and I have it upside down. That's not helpful. Um, shall I read it into the record? It's from Stephen O'Donnell. He's the chairman of the Milton Historical Commission, and it's to all of us, and it says, "Although the Milton Historical Commission is not in favor of breaking the stone wall on the scenic road, we recognize that this action is probably inevitable in order to allow access to this new lot. While we recognize that the developer has indicated that the stone removed would be used to, in quotes, wrap back on the property to line the drive, in quotes, the commission is also hopeful and requests of the developer and would hope that the planning board would instruct the developer that he minimize the removal of trees, shrubbery, and vegetation along both Canton Avenue and along the borders of adjacent properties in order to maintain the vegetative screening and preserve, insofar as possible, the large estate appearance of this neighborhood." And then, I thought I had something from an abutter, but I don't see it now. It may actually have been for a different one, so...
There was something from the abutter. I couldn't open it. It got sent to me, but I couldn't open it.
We had an original one at our first meeting, which I think I may have read in there from an abutter, Donnis Tetro, Howard, and I apologize if I mispronounce it. The Fever. Thank you. So, um, would, uh, oh, this is the one I was thinking about. "They would like the new owners and the builders to avoid, if possible, removing the beautiful trees that separate their properties. And the tree line runs along the antique stone wall that separates their property from the applicant's." We received that. That's dated July 8th, so we received that at our last meeting. So any questions? And then we'll certainly hear from any members of the board.
I have a question.
Yes, Alex.
Uh, the driveway is sixteen feet wide, which is wider than a number of streets we have in town, and it seems to me that that's excessive, and it should be fourteen feet.
Okay. And would you keep the wall opening at eighteen feet, or would you then...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So eighteen-foot opening with a fourteen-foot drive? Can you...
We can do that.
You can do that? Okay. Anything else? Any other questions?
We don't have jurisdiction over anything on the other side of the wall, but we certainly do over the vegetation growing between the wall and the street. You know, thinking which way the development of this could go, it is possible to build back there and preserve everything in front of the wall, and in my mind, it'd be nice to preserve there's some beautiful white pine, and there's some nice trees up near the wall. And a lot of homeowners like that screen from the road...
Absolutely.
And are, they're trying to show off the architecture of the house, where others would want to, you know, scalp it as much as they can, so that when you drive by, you see this grand lawn and the beautiful architecture. Again, in keeping with the more rural estate character of the area, I would prefer the former, that we keep the vegetation in front of the wall and keep, you know, at least a twenty-foot or thirty-foot of vegetation between the wall and the building, so when people drive by, they don't see a huge change other than the driveway itself, because I think that preserves the character of the town more. But we don't have jurisdiction to require that you do that. But I would like to require that they preserve the vegetation between the edge of the road and the wall, because that is under our jurisdiction. Certainly, removing things that are dead, and as the trees grow larger, there may be some pruning requirements and things, but I wouldn't like to see that area between the street and the wall be cleared and begin being mowed or something, because I think that changes the character of the street. So I would ask that our approval require that the vegetation in front of the wall be preserved, unless it's having a negative impact on the wall, if the roots are, are to break up the wall.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't know if I have a, I have a question, I guess, that goes with that. If I cut down the trees from the wall to the street...
Right.
Because they'd have to go for a tree warden hearing. Where this is sited, there are no trees.
Okay.
Well, I don't think that's, I, I went out there and I photographed and tried to figure out exactly where it is, and the eighteen feet where the opening would be, there are trees, but as you go along the property line frontage, I mean, there's no planted street trees, a tree with a maintained canopy, but there's a lot of vegetation along the entire length of that wall, between the wall and the street. And certainly, he's going to have to clear to put his roadway opening, but I, I wouldn't want to see him clear, or see whoever owns the property, clear the vegetation in front of the wall, because I think that changes the character of the street.
What were your plans for the vegetation?
Where the driveway goes in, that vegetation's gotta go.
Right.
We, we're all in agreement there, right?
Yes.
Sure, you're hitting it.
You're asking, don't take it from A to point B at 150 feet of frontage. Only do it at the eighteen feet.
Right.
Right, essentially.
And then, you know, I would love to see you preserve some of the tree buffer between the wall and the house. It gives the house more privacy and things like that, but we don't have jurisdiction over that.
Yeah. Again, the trees that are...
The nicer trees and things that...
Those have to come down.
Yeah, those have to come down.
And a lot of those...
But there's some purple white pine, and there's some nice trees that could give a nice buffer. And then, as people drive down the street, it doesn't look a whole lot different than it does today.
Correct.
And I think that would be our intention.
Anything else on the board? I think we have one of your neighbors who'd like to come and have a chat with us. Come on up, introduce yourself, please.
My name's Howard McFiver. I live at 1641 Canton Ave.
Welcome.
Been there for over thirty years. So my concern, all I'm asking for is the trees that go down that antique wall that is the...
Between your property and...
Right, that is the property line.
If Canton Ave's here, that goes into the property.
Right, it goes down to the other lot that has some falling-down pine.
Yeah.
Because we've had that buffer there, and it's nice to see the trees.
Yeah, this line.
Yeah, down this line. So all these trees, and I know that they're not my trees, but we'd really like to see them stay, because they've been there for so long. And it gives us the buffer between what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Because the next lot down, I've got a pine that sits in front of that thing, so it's... But we just like to have, we've had all that privacy over these years.
Sure.
But we know we can't make the person do it, but we're asking that we...
We also don't have jurisdiction over that wall, because it's a long side lot. We've only got the scenic road opening along the scenic road, but we're happy to have the two of you discuss that, and...
Well, I know that when our driveway was moved years ago, we had to put the wall back to where, where it is today. So we'd like to see that. It's a beautiful drive. Well, I mean, I'm lucky to be there, lucky to have that piece of property. So that's what, what we'd like to see.
Definitely work with that, yeah.
And if you need any talk with us, we're right there. We're approaching it.
Sure.
Excellent. Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So you're going to exchange information so that you can communicate...
So you're going to exchange information, so that you can communicate further about that? In other words, to know who you're going to talk to. You've made your pitch, but you're going to probably want to...
We can knock on his door.
Continue to do so. You're going to want to do, keep after this, because there's no reason that the trees can't be preserved if, as long as, you know, someone doesn't come up with some design that's, uh, no one really wants, but no one has really thought about.
Sure.
Well, the driveway's far enough from the trees that it shouldn't be an issue, but it's definitely worth keeping the lines of communication open, especially during construction, when it gets noisy and dusty.
No, construction's clean.
Nice try. Um, any other questions from the board members? Do we have a motion on this?
I'd make a motion that we approve an 18-foot opening in the wall, um, and that the, and with a 14-foot wide driveway, and that the, the stones removed from the wall be used to create returns on the driveway.
They're on the plan.
And they're, and they are on the plan.
As shown on the plan.
As shown on the plan.
As shown on the plan.
You're going to, you're, all as shown on the plan.
Right. Well, the driveway, unfortunately, is shown as the larger driveway on the plan.
Right, well, we'll change that to a 14-foot wide driveway.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
And that also that, that we request that no vegetation between the wall and the roadway be, be removed.
Okay. Any second of it, thank you very much, Bernie. Any other discussion?
Except, except any vegetation...
That's destroying the wall.
Yeah. Or is...
Or is necessary.
...the access.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll accept that as a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Bill and Diane, you guys have this down? Okay. Any other, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. We'll get the written, uh, decision out to you. We'll be all set.
Thank you very much.
It's definitely a ladder from this to Clark or Yell.
Yes.
Okay, but...
Be either way.
Yeah?
Well, you can either sign it, or I'll be happy to sign it, however you want to do it. All right, next item on our agenda is 597 Randolph Avenue.
We need that bottom one first and left.
47 Webster, yeah, absolutely, we can absolutely do that.
But that one?
He's waiting for it.
He's been waiting patiently. So, come on up. All right, so this is an approval not required, if you'd just like to introduce yourself for the cameras.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve DeRoche, a professional surveyor with the company of the Fox and Valley Survey Associates, and our offices are in Cleveland, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And you are here to talk to us about an A&R?
Uh, yes. Um, we prepared an A&R plan for the, uh, for the Cunningham Foundation. They've come across a situation economically where they've got a lot of work they want to do at, at the park. Uh, the biggest being is the pool repairs. And they decided to sell the, uh, the house at number 47 Webster Road that they now own. So they had us go in and we created a, an A&R lot around the existing house. This, uh, property is in a residency zone, and we either meet or greatly exceed the requirements of the residency zone all the way around, with the exception of one item, which we just learned today. We understand the chimney can only extend into the side, you have to set back 18 inches, and this particular chimney is like 20 inches. So we have to make a modification to move the subtly property line another couple of inches away, and it's not going to affect anything in any respect. The foundation also wants to make sure that there's no further subdivision of this lot, A, whether it be by zoning board of appeals or whatever. So we're going to add some language to the plan that will prohibit that.
We're going to have to add it to the deed.
To the deed also, yes. It's going to be at both places.
Because the A&R doesn't carry much legal weight beyond legitimizing the law.
Well, it's a survey, right, I like to think it does, but...
But we can, we can, we can put on no further division of the lot.
Yeah.
So you'll need to bring us back and you...
Well, what I'm going to ask the board also is that...
And you can say, "No further division of the lot, all deeds shall reflect..." Shall so reflect, shall so require.
Language similar to that, yeah. Um, what I'm going to ask the board is that we're going to have these changes made probably tomorrow. And I'm going to ask the board for their permission to have Mr. Clark sign the Mylar once we have it prepared, which might be Monday or Tuesday of next week. Uh, just for expediency purposes, we can get this into the registry, and the sale of the land can take place.
Any questions?
Do they have a buyer?
I'm sorry, do they have a buyer? Oh, yeah, they have a buyer already.
It's Ann Lee's plan.
My plan, give me my plan back.
Just hang on.
Okay, so it's, uh, sorry, it's the side lot line?
I don't see how you could possibly divide that again, but, uh...
See, you could divide that, uh, no, you're right, you see, you can, actually.
Mr. White said the, the... They could go before the zoning board of appeals if they got a real good...
I know, okay, okay.
Yeah, fair enough.
Could happen.
Um, and sorry, it's the, this side lot, the 10-foot that you're...
Will, will now be like a 10-foot or...
Yeah, exactly.
So they've got to go.
Two more inches.
Yeah.
Um, okay, any questions from board members? Yes.
I would certainly vote for this A&R plan, but I just did a home inspection for the people that are buying that house, so just for conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself from making any yes or no.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Questions? Yeah.
I'd just like to say, Madam Chair, I was born in Cunningham Park, and I approve this subdivision, A&R.
Right.
That's good to have.
In the hospital, in the old Milton Hospital.
In Cunningham, okay.
Vote that we authorize Mr. Clark to execute on behalf of the board plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
The amended plan.
With the amendments, with the amendments that have been discussed.
All right, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much, board members.
Four with one decision, thank you very much.
Coming to our meeting.
Yes.
We also had, uh, uh, and afterward, I played softball with Mr. DeRoche at Cunningham Park also.
Oh, there's a...
Good to know.
The athlete?
Yeah.
All right.
The athlete.
Next item on our agenda is now 597 Randolph Avenue. Okay, this is complex.
Really?
Yes, this is extremely complex.
Madam Chairman, I, I make a motion? Uh, since there's no one here to present this to the board...
No, I actually have, I have stuff that I have to bring to the board about it. This is not a present to the board, this is things that I have to bring to the board about this. So I would appreciate the opportunity to go through this, since I've actually been spending quite a lot of time on it. And there are matters that I need to bring to the board's attention now, because we are going to have to make some decisions going forward on this.
But it seems if it's a citizen's petition, there should be some citizens here to suggest that the board take up this matter.
It is quite frequent for the citizen's petition to be passed on to the planning board without, for our consideration, without the citizens being present at the first meeting that has certainly been happening in the past. And since we are going to have to make some rapid decisions on this, I feel that the board should be fully informed, as well as the public, about the fact that we are going to be discussing this.
I'm prepared to make decisions on that.
You bet. Me too.
Yes.
Point of view.
Yes.
Can you tell us who the petition is at?
Abs, well, actually, that's a good question, I can't. Let me, let me introduce this properly, so that I can give you all the information that I have about it.
She has got a presentation that's going to answer all our questions.
I actually have a presentation that may raise more questions, okay. So...
Well, good.
You, you all should have received a memo that I sent out, um, on the 27th of August, uh, both an email and the attached memo, hopefully you've had a chance to read it. Let me introduce for the public what's been going on with this, so that they're aware of it, and then we can start to talk a little bit about some of the questions involved. Kevin Mern brought to my attention that the, a few weeks ago, that there was going to be a citizen's petition that covered the property at 59, or the property at 597 Randolph Avenue, which is the piece of property owned by St. Elizabeth's Church, was the subject of that citizen's petition.
Across from St. Elizabeth's Church.
Sorry, it's a, but it's owned by it.
Yes.
Across by, from St. Elizabeth's, and it's owned by it. Thank you, yes.
Bill Dolan's old office, isn't it?
And Bill Dolan's home office.
I did not know that.
And it's subject of the Milton Historical Commission?
Yes, it is, which I will get to.
I'm sure that's in there, too.
Yes, it is in there. So, so the language, the original language of the citizen's petition, Bill had actually sent to Alex for his comments sometime in August. Uh, it's all in the memos to the days. And Alex had, and I'd been CC'd on it, and Alex had responded CCing me on it, that there were significant flaws in this citizen's petition. So the same citizen's petition, the one that Alex had already reviewed with no changes, is what Kevin sent to me. And I called up Anthony Roseto, who was the person who was actually presenting this, and said, "We need to talk, because there are flaws in this." And, um, it was being presented as a possible, at the time I was told it was a possible citizen's petition for the November special town meeting. And the special town meeting timeline is extremely tight because of the requirements of giving the warrant to the public, significantly before the requirements for an annual town meeting. So I spoke to the chairman of the warrant committee and said, um, you know, "This is coming up." And he said, "You need to come in and talk to the warrant committee and let them know." And initially, I would be talking to the warrant committee and finding out the timelines, and then meeting with you the very next day. But unfortunately, because we had to cancel that meeting, I wasn't able to meet you and update you with the timelines. And in the subsequent period, those timelines may have changed. And I alluded to that at the beginning of our meeting, which is that the board of selectmen are considering moving the special town meeting to January instead of November. And what this changes is, this has actually been submitted, as presented to you. It's actually the third draft, um, after my conversation with Mr. Roseto. It's the third draft of this potential article. It has actually been submitted by the citizens to the board of selectmen, so they have it on their plate. I cannot tell you which citizen signed it, because I have not seen the signature page. I can tell you for a special town meeting, it requires 100 signatures, but I don't know what those signatures are. I do know, or whose signatures those are. I do know that Mr. Roseto has, or I've been told that Mr. Roseto has a purchase and sale with St. Elizabeth's, which is why he's the one who's bringing this forward. As indicated in my memo that you guys have all been copied on, there are significant, significant flaws with this article as written. And in fact, um, the, the third draft, which I have not commented on, but is mostly unchanged from the second draft, which you've seen, the third draft has even more flaws. The, the changes that were made actually increased the flaws rather than decreased them. So if this were to go to town meeting in November, as written, as a citizen's petition, I can't see that town meeting would pass this, because the flaws that are in there do not provide any protection to the town. And in fact, um, just to give you an example of one of the flaws in this meeting, the way this is written, it would allow anybody to assemble a parcel of multiple lots between 1 and 2 acres and provide 12 units per acre on those lots. So, for example, I could take my house and three parcels next to my house, and instead of having four houses on there, I could have 24 houses on there at 12 units an acre. Exactly. And that would, though, the way this is written, my understanding is that would allow this in all of residential C. Now, that is a significant flaw in the zoning. The selectmen, my, my understanding in talking with the town administrators, that the selectmen are equally concerned about the flaws in the zoning. And one of the reasons they are considering moving the special town meeting to January would be to allow us, the planning board, to address this request and see if we were, A, willing to, and B, able to actually sponsor an article for town meeting that would allow the intent of what they're trying to do, but without the significant flaws that provide no protection to the town.
Oh, I have a question. The intent is to jam 12 houses onto a single acre. Whereas now, potentially, in a C-zone, you, you might be able to get six if you didn't have to build a road, if you were lucky.
The intent would not have been expressed as jamming 12 units, 12 buildings on a single acre. The intent is to provide 12 units of housing in six duplexes. And you do have a site plan with which I also have significant issues, but that's another matter, um, that shows that. So yes, the intent is to provide a higher density. The intent, as you will see from the zoning, is to provide housing that is available for people who are between 80 and 140% of the average median income of this area. There, that brings up another problem with the zoning, which is it defines it as wanting to be for the people who meet that qualification, but the zoning itself doesn't actually provide how that would be done. Other flaws with the zoning, including my favorite line of all...
Your favorite flaw?
Uh, my favorite flaw, which is wherever appropriate, the planning board may grant waivers from the strict requirements of this section or the Milton zoning bylaw, which essentially gives the Milton planning board ultimate power over anything coming to us, and is a really, really...
With the board of appeals.
Bad idea.
No, it's beyond that, because of course...
There are no empresses.
The board of appeals are supposed to act within certain statutes. And this would simply mean that we could do whatever we want, however we wanted.
Bad idea. Extremely bad idea. So my, the reason I'm bringing this up now, I mean, obviously, I've been hoping that Mr. Roseto would be here, and he was unable to be here. But the reason I'm bringing this up to you now is if we... This will go to the special town meeting, no matter what. It is either going to go as a significantly flawed citizen's petition, or it is going to go there with some work from us. And the question is going to be, A, how do you want to do it? And B, for me to let you know, that and talking with the chairman of the warrant committee, who, as you all know, is my husband.
Pillow talk?
No, not pillow talk, unfortunately, more like, "You tell the planning board this has to be done by..." Yes, yes, yes. Um, we have to have the language ready by the time the selectmen would put this on the warrant, which would be the beginning of November. Now, that's not to say it has to be the absolutely perfect final language, because we'll still have to have, once it goes on the warrant, we still have to have our public hearings. But what it has to do is it has to be complete enough by the beginning of November that we could then act within the scope of that article in making any changes at a public hearing. At the moment, I have not gotten Jonathan's opinion on it, but I can tell you from looking at it, that we cannot act within the scope of the citizen's petition to fix the flaws. There are too many.
So what would we do? We'd come up with our own article?
We would have to come up with our own article, working.
If we wanted to.
Working, if it is...
This, this, this thing is, as you say, flawed. If it goes to town meeting, it will be voted down, and, uh, that will be the end of it.
Well, not necessarily. They could also refer it back to the planning board for further study.
They, they could indeed do that.
Which would take us to the May annual town meeting.
It would take us to the, a year from the May annual town meeting.
Not necessarily. They could actually specify that it be brought to this, you know, the town meeting has options here, and they could tell us that they want us to bring it back to the May annual town meeting.
Planning board has its rights, though.
Well, we do have some rights, one or two, not however ignoring the zoning. Despite what they say.
Or waiving the zoning.
Or waiving the zoning. So my question to you to think about between now and our next meeting, and hopefully we will get more people, it would be nice, I have not had the opportunity to speak to anybody from St. Elizabeth's, it would be nice if they would, they, or either a representative of St. Elizabeth's themselves, or perhaps some of the initial signatories would like to speak to us, um, if they're listening, that would be helpful. Otherwise, I don't know if you have access to the signatories, but we'd, and we'd like to invite them to come and meet with us to find out what the actual intent, not what the article says, but what the intent of the article is, so we can work with that. Um, it's called workforce housing planned unit development. It's not actually written as a planned unit development. And workforce housing is a specific term that means something, and this isn't necessarily...
It doesn't mean anything, does it?
Workforce housing, yeah, is a specific term with specific requirements, absolutely.
Is it in the, in the statute?
Building codes?
It's not in the building codes, it's a, it's a planning term that's used that refers to a specific type of housing. When I spoke to Anthony about this, he wasn't actually certain that workforce housing was what he meant it to be. So that's something else we need to find out, is what this, in public session, for all of us to listen to, we need to find out... all of us to listen to, we need to find out what the real intent is of this.
Well, it kind of says it, to promote social and economic diversity and stability of individuals with families living in Milton along a full range of incomes.
Yes.
So it kind of does say.
It does that, but when you, when I spoke to him about the specifics of how, you know, because then it goes into provide quality workforce housing for residents of the town of Milton and its employees with middle-tier income, that is 80 percent to 140 percent of the average median income for the town of Milton, and to provide its police officers, firefighters, educators, nurses, for first-time homebuyers, and other essential workers in the community with the opportunity to reside in Milton. So that sounds great, fabulous, and it's well-needed, because we have people at those incomes that would like to live in Milton in camps because of the current prices. I think that's fabulous. The zoning itself doesn't say how it's going to be limited to these people, how is that going to be administered, who determines whether or not the people qualify, do we also want to open it up to retired people, or is it only for people who are currently working? What about people, because it says workers in the community, does that mean people who work in Milton and live in Milton, or people who work only for the town? Or are you including, you see what I mean? So the way it's stated, there could be a lot more specifics that aren't in here, and we need to clarify those, because it may be that this introduction is actually more specific than they wanted. And that's what, one of the things we need to find out. So I'm bringing this forward to you now so you can think about it and think about how you want to handle it. And then we can obviously continue to discuss it now, but also, I want to put you on notice that we'll be discussing it on the 22nd at our next meeting. So, yes.
Just a comment, Chairman. Down at Central Avenue, we are rebuilding the, the area to make it more amenable to the public and make it look prettier and utilize the space better. We've done that down in the Wall Street area also with success. But this is so poorly presented to us that I think it, I almost want to reject it outright because especially when I see.
Very ugly plan, isn't it?
The rendering is an abomination.
I am not fond of that site plan.
And when we think about, if this would, if this would have happened at an intersection with Columbus and all, all around, then as I say, it's just tough to even discuss it with, if this is what is envisioned for the final product.
Let me throw in another wrinkle or two for you, because it brings up something that you mentioned earlier, which is the historical commission has a demolition delay on the building that's on the site now.
Yeah.
Which is a granite building, 1830s, and John Cronin was kind enough to send me some history.
I read that one.
About that, yeah. I think he sent it to, to most or all of us, some history about it. I, I printed out the pictures before the second story was put on.
Nice.
So.
Beautiful.
And here's another one. So there's the question of the history of it, there's also the question of the fact, and I'm, I'm not in a butter, but I live reasonably close to it, around the corner. There's, it's a green space, and there's not many green spaces in that particular area. And Mr. Cronin expressed concern, actually, Mr. Roseto said that he'd had some concern from some of the people in St. Elizabeth's, that that green space be partially preserved, and that's something that we want to consider, is how we would do that, and whether or not we would want to require that the house be kept as part of the zoning, given its historical nature. So, so I'm saying this is a very complex issue. It's why I wanted the chance to bring it up to you now, so we could start to think about some of the issues and, and to go forward and think about it. And if we could have some of the citizens for our next meeting, I only found out that Mr. Roseto wasn't going to be here today about two hours before the meeting started. So that's part of the problem, yes.
Could the town plan a check, some of his counterparts in, in the Commonwealth, if, if this zoning exists?
Mm-hmm.
Do a little procedure.
I've never seen it.
I have, because my firm's worked on some projects that...
Well, they've got a network.
Milton workforce housing?
No, I mean.
No.
Or, or specific town workforce housing?
See how it works.
What's, what usually happens with workforce housing, and Bill, please chime in, is it's usually the town or a nonprofit that does it. That's one of the reasons this is so complex, is they're naming it as workforce housing, but they don't have an overarching body that actually manages that. Usually, the town would build workforce housing, or a nonprofit would come in. That's, I work for an urban planning firm, and they have done some jobs in the past where they've worked for the nonprofit to come up with designs for this. Bill, please fill in.
The way this whole site came forward was one of, and the language that came with They wanted to change the zoning on this site and potentially a few others around town to develop the ability to develop, to build townhouses.
Mm-hmm.
When they attempted to take and work with their zoning, they kept running into people saying, "You're spot zoning, you can't do that." Well, I don't see the word overlay until the second rendition that you have.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not in the beginning, it's in the end. Whereas, it should have said overlay in the beginning, but they stuck with that workforce housing, and now they've stuck with this thing that says workforce housing, and this is what we want, that isn't what they wanted. What they wanted was to be able to build, and they've got 63,000 square feet, 63,000 square feet, in a perfect world would be eight units on that site. Eight units, if you were to build brand-new houses minus any roads, that's 24 bedrooms. Back that number out, they put in 12 units, you know, six buildings, 12 units, 24 bedrooms. So they tried to stick with the bedroom number, and then they started writing. And they didn't know what they were doing, they couldn't get themselves away from it. They've got this comment about workforce housing. That's not what they're looking for, they're looking for a diversity of housing type.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't have design review, so they can come up with a plan like this. We don't have a diversity of housing type for a cluster that works. Therefore, this is what they came up with. There's so many mistakes in it, they need help in reforming what they put forward. And I think that's what is being asked of the planning board, is to take up that new mantle, help create this diversity of housing type, work with, you know, this type of site. There may be a few, but create an overlay to do this.
Yeah.
This point of order, who is "they"?
At this point, it would be the developer and the church.
Who's the developer?
Anthony Roseto.
Anthony Roseto.
So when you say "they," you mean St. Elizabeth's Parish, St. Elizabeth's Church Parish, and we shoot it together, that's who "they" are?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Hi, Eddie.
Yes.
If the selectmen are presented with a, a complete citizens' petition that meets all the requirements of the citizens' petition, is the town obligated to take it up?
The selectmen, my understanding is the selectmen can refuse citizens' petitions only under limited circumstances.
And have they done so? Have they taken any action on this?
They have to take it up.
They've taken no action on this.
It's, it would be September 14th is when they are considering it again.
So they're going to either deny the citizens' petition because, for whatever reason they can?
They can't.
This is, no, this is a warrant.
Right, I'm, I'm just trying to get to it. So since a citizens' petition was legitimately filed.
Yes.
For town meeting, we need to take it up as written and take it to town meeting?
Wait, hold on.
Is that correct?
If they had opened and closed the warrant on September 1st, yes. Because the, the, this was filed by September 1st, they were going to, originally, they were going to open and close the warrant on September 1st, and this would now be on our plates for the special town meeting in November.
Mm-hmm.
And we would, because of the zoning, we would have to hold public hearings on it, the way we've done with any other Article for Zoning, and then we would have to make our recommendation to the warrant committee and the town meeting.
Yeah.
However, and this is what is produced, I promised you wrinkles at the beginning of the meeting, I'm giving you the wrinkle. The wrinkle is that the selectmen are considering not having a November special town meeting.
I understand that.
And are considering having a January special town meeting, which would mean that they would not open and close the warrant until November.
Right.
Which means this is now sitting out there.
But it's, it's a legitimately presented citizens' petition.
It's a legitimate, it's a legitimate, yes, but they won't have opened and closed the warrant until November, which gives us the chance, as a board, to present our own zoning, to work with the citizens.
So the citizens would then withdraw this petition?
If we work with them, they would withdraw their petition.
There are 100 of them.
No, but, but, but the procedure that's being suggested is that the selectmen request the citizens that they withdraw their petition and instead work with the planning board.
Essentially, yes.
I guess if they do that, then I'm happy to work on it.
And then the, if we do not work with them, and I'll get you, Eddie, then they are free to continue to submit the petition for the special town meeting in January.
It's been submitted. It's just that the, the selectmen have a, they're functionaries, all they have to do is schedule the thing. They can't, they can't change it if it's in proper form.
I believe if it's dangerous in any way, shape, or form, they're allowed to.
I mean, when you have a...
No, 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 I mean, if there was, if there was a petition, it's dangerous.
Asking for a special town meeting, the selectmen have to, have to do it.
Present it, right.
Ed, I saw your hand up.
With all due respect to Mr. Black, and I'd like to ask this question, a clarification, Bill. When you were talking, you mentioned they were looking in other sites around town. Again, are you saying "they," the same "they"? In other words?
No, as you, as they took and wrote their zoning.
The developer.
The, the developer had his lawyer take the first crack at what you saw. And it says Residence C District, which can be anywhere in town. So if you start realistically thinking about what you could develop in other parts of town, this starts to get something that you really don't want to have too much to do with, you start to push away. I think as you write the overlay, the board may want to take and think about, does this work for any place else in town? Are you...
It doesn't work, it works anywhere in the C-zone.
But how, how do we want to define?
No, the new one, the new, what you developed, would that overlay work anywhere else in town?
Remember how we did the Temple Sewell thing?
Exactly.
Trying to.
Exactly.
Trying to do it, but it only did one site, it was almost impossible.
Right, there were three sites that could have been done with the temple.
That's correct.
I think that was one site, but...
No, there were three, ultimately, there were three sites.
The State Highway didn't exist.
Yes.
I don't know.
Thank you, Bill. In any event, in any event, the, the, just figuring out how to limit it to the St. Elizabeth parcel is a huge, complicated, difficult.
Yes, it is.
Piece of work.
Possibly undesirable. I mean, if they, if a legitimate citizens' petition has been presented.
Yes.
And that the town has no alternative but to consider the petition, let's let it go forward as is.
Okay, but I think we're probably missing the point here, which is Milton does need a diversity of housing. Milton has an absolute need.
It's your opinion that Milton does.
No, I have heard it from any number of people, that Milton has a need for different types of housing at different price levels. Now, we've addressed some of this ourselves by the condos that have gone in, and we've done a good job with that. Now what we do is we have an opportunity with somebody coming in and saying, "I'm interested in townhouses, I'm interested in putting townhouses in." And this is our opportunity to sit here and say, "Okay, townhouses is an interesting idea, why don't we have a look at that? Why don't we allow the town meeting to debate that?" At the moment, if this article goes to town meeting the way it is, the debate is, they ask for the opinion of the planning board, I get up and say, "The opinion of the planning board is that this is too flawed to debate, this is too flawed to class, we're done." Except there's probably going to be a couple of hours of people debating how flawed it is, but we're essentially done. That means we don't actually discuss the issue itself, which is, does Milton, as you said, maybe that's my only opinion, only my opinion, does Milton need a diversity of housing types?
Like this kind of difference.
And that, that would allow it. Does, if Milton does need the diversity of housing types, do these townhouses provide something that we as a town are interested in? We can have that debate at town meeting if we have an article that is properly structured so that if it passes, it provides protection to the town. We can have that debate at town meeting if all we have is an article that is so fundamentally flawed, we can't even begin to discuss it. So that's the, this is the opportunity that I'm saying that we have to look at it, is do we want to take something to town and say, "Look, people have brought this forward as an issue, we're bringing forward zoning that allows you to discuss it, let's have that discussion."
Who's going to do the work, Bill? Obviously, it's needed.
It is needed, yes.
It is needed, no question of mind. But who's going to do the work?
But if it is so, if it is needed so, so desperately, why weren't we consulted whatsoever with regard to the town farm? We were not.
We were not consulted with regard to the town farm.
Correct, and we should be, we're the land use people.
And I have to say that I believe Mr. Cronin brought up the town farm, can I say I think he might have said something about the town farm as being, no, my mistake, that was something else. We, there's going to be a parcel left over on the town farm, do you want to look at that? I actually suggested to Mr. Roseto that instead of looking at this, he should look at it as a cluster development. And that may be it, is that we may completely junk this language and come up with a different way of doing it, and that's also possible. That is easier to modify.
Remember, we had a discussion of the Cluster Bylaw with the people at 683, 685 Rushmore Road.
Yes, we did.
And we said, "Should there be an incentive by adding additional units for the cluster?" And the...
Neighbors.
The neighbors said, "No, there should be a reduction."
But my point is, I think there are, there are other ways of approaching this.
And, and you know, it seems to me that certainly the board, if they think 12 units an acre is a proper number of units, I, I think that, as far as I'm concerned, that's a non-starter. I think it's too dense for the town to build.
Okay, see?
And they, they provide that half of the, half of the lot can be paved over, and it, it's really, it, it is so flawed. I mean, it means going and conceptualizing some zoning and then figuring out all the problems and addressing it. It's, because what they've given us is worth nothing as far as starting to zone something properly.
Well, the Romney's, you know, experts.
Right.
And, but the intent is, is, you know, trying to help your neighbor.
It, it, it is.
Without scoring at the town.
It simply says this is workforce housing, but the developer is not obligated in any way to sell it to people in that price range. They can build whatever they want, they can sell it to whoever they want for as much as they can.
But we can change that.
Well, I, you can, you can do all kinds of things, but it's...
It's an interesting concept.
Well, it's mildly interesting.
Pete has been waiting patiently to say something, Pete.
I just, you know, the first question, you suggest we debate at town meeting whether or not this is the type of housing we want in town. That's a piece of the question. But the second question, if we want that type of housing, what are the locational criteria?
Yes.
How do we determine where in town that's best suited? And to automatically slap it on this parcel as what the debate is, you know, I think, I think indeed, I think it takes more work. If they set a goal of the, try to have something at the annual town meeting and began discussion of the concept of workforce housing and what that meant, and, you know, how it should be located in town, you know, I'd have no problem with the notion of, over the next six months, working on something for the fall town meeting, but to try to hurry up a concept which is developed for a particular parcel, which it may not be appropriate for that parcel, I, you know, I'd really object to it in that way. So I'm happy to talk about the type of housing.
Maybe not, not that.
In the context of an annual town meeting so that we can solicit public input, we can think of, you know, if you're going to do that density of housing, is it important to be near stores and, and public transportation? and, and public transportation, and walking distance to schools? And, you know, what locations would it solve?
Let me just say that I did my best to persuade Mr. Reseda that the May Town Meeting would be more appropriate. I think I said it about 5,000 times, possibly 5,001. And that best wasn't quite good enough, because it was obviously submitted for the November. I agree. I think we needed more time.
So then let it go through. They've submitted a legitimate petition.
Wait, wait, wait. Let me finish. More wrinkles. And this is where we really needed Mr. Reseda, because he, apparently, there is a timeline, as there often is with property, and the May Town Meeting is too late in the timeline. I did point out that if it goes to Town Meeting and gets sent back to the Planning Board, it's going to be May anyway. So I pass that on to you without comment. I would also like to say, because this is the second time that this has happened, is that as the current Chair of this Board, I would greatly appreciate it if citizens, in wanting to do zoning, would come to the Planning Board first, prior to submitting citizens' articles, and discuss with us what they'd like to do, where they'd like to do it, what their intent is, and give us plenty of time, because writing zoning, as you have all expressed tonight, and as I expressed to Mr. Reseda in our conversation, writing zoning is incredibly complex, and doing it under a citizens' petition is, as we've noticed, a really bad idea. So should any future people out there be thinking about doing citizens' petitions for zoning? Please come to us first, all I ask. So I suggest we continue this on the 22nd, if that's okay with all of you. Hopefully, we'll get some people in to answer a few questions on things like timelines, and why, and what, and where, and how. And anything else on our agenda?
We haven't had the Town Planner's Report.
We haven't had a Town Planner's Report. Do you have a report for us?
Sure. Been dealing with the Wind Turbine project, dealing with the appeal issues. The order conditions has been appealed, was appealed to DEP, and DEP did not issue a superseding set of orders, order conditions. Quarry Hills then filed a, filed an appeal of the Town's local bylaw, which puts us into Superior Court, which we haven't addressed yet. They sent the, Quarry Hills sent a letter to MIPA stating that they wanted a review. MIPA wrote back a letter saying, "There's no need for it. There is no fail-safe requirement for it." So that moves forward. We're dealing with the interconnection issues with the Town Administrator and NSTAR. Green Communities Grant, dealing with the implementation of the grant that we received. We moved the Planning Office, the Consolidated Facilities Department, and the Zoning Board of Appeals all up into the back corner of Town Hall. I get moved to the middle. Diane get moved exactly beside me. So we're up on the second floor, same space, just right inside the door to the left. And then dealing with paperwork and homeowner issues, some from the storm, some just for, can I build this? Can I build that? What about, how do I do this? How do I do that? Phone calls.
Sounds good. Any questions? Yes.
Bill, perhaps we could expand next time, a little bit about Bill Ritchie being in there. You mentioned Consolidated, but Bill Ritchie is now there too, which is a huge change. Maybe a future meeting could describe how it's going and so forth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else?
The move, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay.
All right.